I'll call this meeting of the International Falls City Council to order Monday, May 19th at 5:29 PM. Please join us to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All members of the council are present tonight for the record. We have an addition to tonight's agenda without any documentation. Our attorney, Chelsea Nelson, had asked to add the teardown of a mobile home, I believe, at 2210 Third Avenue West. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah.
Any other additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillor Holden and Councillor Kayler is their discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. First minutes of the Monday, May 5th, 2025, regular city council meeting. And second, minutes of the Monday, May 12th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting. The chair would entertain a motion to approve minutes sets one and two.
Move to approve minutes.
Motion by Councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Minutes from previous meetings are approved unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, to adopt a resolution approving transfers, payments, claims, and accounts payable. Beginning with transfers, total transfers of $95,833.33. Moving to accounts payable and claims, City of International Falls claims $968,703.31. International Falls Public Library Board claims $6,594.19. For a total accounts payable and claims, $975,297.50. Chair would entertain a motion to approve these transfers, payments, and claims.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillors Kayler and Holden. Discussion before we vote on paying the bills. Seeing no further discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Bills are paid 5-0. Thank you. Next, we'll move to audience open forum for any business that a citizen would like to bring forward. Limited to five minutes. We'll move on this evening to the consent agenda to approve a year 2025 license for Jeff Briggs Construction. This is a snowplow license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councillors Buller and Wagner and the question. No.
Before the question, we have discussion.
Not on the consent agenda?
Nothing.
Oh, you just, okay, just add that in there.
Aye.
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 Sorry. Aye. That's fine. I remind myself of the time.
Not a question, but does he know something we don't? Getting a snowplow license already?
Please.
No, I think we're moving away from that.
And the fees and thing. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to new business, Voyagers National Park update from Mr. Bob DeGrosse, Superintendent, and soon to be retired.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. Bob DeGrosse, Superintendent of Voyagers National Park headquartered at 360 Highway 11 East in International Falls. And I know you have a busy agenda, so I just want to go through some quick updates related to the park. First and foremost, I want to thank the entire city council for recent proclamations that you passed related to the park back in April 8th, recognizing the 50th anniversary of the park, and then not too long after that, just recognizing the importance of dark skies and how they benefit not only us as residents, but the people who travel up here from all over the country and many places in the world to experience something that we have the privilege of, you know, being able to live right in, having a dark sky that is not impacted by a lot of light pollution and everything. So I really appreciate that. And as you said, Mayor, I will be retiring on May 30th, just 11 days, I think. Not that I'm counting. But I wanted to use this opportunity to introduce Brian Harmon, who's currently our Lead for Natural and Cultural Resources. And upon my retirement, he will be acting in my place. So if you could take a few minutes just to introduce himself. It's okay, right there.
Hi. As Bob said, I'm Brian Harmon. I'm the Head of Natural and Cultural Resources at Voyagers National Park. My wife and I moved here in 2019 for me to take the job at Voyagers. It was an excellent choice all around. This is, we love International Falls, we love the park, the folks here are fantastic. One thing that I've really gotten to enjoy watching Bob do the five, almost five and a half years that I've been here is just be very open in communicating with the communities around the park and being very open to listening to people and hearing them. And that is something that I intend to continue as I'm in the acting position. So I do very much look forward to hearing from any and all of you and anyone else in the community. Thank you.
And with that, just a few other things that are taking place. I did send some communication to the board members of not only International Falls, but to the counties associated with Voyagers National Park and the other Gateway communities as well, that back on May 6th, we took the action of terminating the NEPA process as it relates to our frozen lakes planning effort that we were undertaking. Basically, as we heard from the communities and also as we looked at that action and the potential impacts related to the use, we saw that the impacts were no greater than what the typical impacts that we see during the summer months and everything. So basically, as it relates to the frozen lake access onto the lakes, primarily the western end of Rainy Lake and the frozen surface of Cab Togoma Lake, we'll be managing vehicle use on those areas as we have been in the past and everything. So a couple of other things going on. Kettle Falls, we are nearing the end of the current contract for the operator out at Kettle Falls. That will be completed at the end of 2026. And so we're in the process of communicating and trying to encourage interest in the next contract period, which will take effect in 2027. We're not sure if the current operator will be interested in submitting a prospectus. He might, but just in case he's not, we are trying to get the word out there to find other potential operators for that service out at Kettle Falls. But through 2025 and 2026, the service will be operating as years pass under that contract and everything. There's going to be some work down at the Rainy Lake Visitor Center parking area and Marina launch area. A matter of fact, there's going to be a contract starting here in a couple of weeks to remove an old septic system that we no longer need out there because we're attached to the central sewer system. And so we're going to be removing that mound system. And a benefit of that is that it will actually allow us to modify the parking in that upper visitor center parking lot to where maybe we will be able to accommodate more vehicles in that area. We're also going to be looking, or we're starting the process of really looking at that entire developed area and seeing how it might be modified, recognizing the fact that we have an overflow parking problem in that area with all of the trucks and trailers that utilize that area for the boat launch and everything. However, that project is going to take several years for us to actually get it going and see on the ground work. And then another thing at the Rainy Lake Visitor Center area in '26 or '27, we will be starting a road resurfacing and repair project down in that area. And once that starts, whether it be in '26 or '27, that is going to be a two-year project. We do not anticipate the area closing at all, but obviously modifying or regulating traffic through that area with a flag system and everything like that. And then very quickly, the last thing I want to say is just thank you for everything that's been taking place down at the headquarters area through our lease. Last summer, there was a lot of activity to improve the drainage around the building and other things that are taking place in the building. The work that's been taking place actually has stopped a leaking issue that we've had and everything, so we're grateful for that. But we are continuing our lease there. I know that with the new administration coming in, there were several questions about the continuation of certain leases, but that lease was never on the table or anything like that because it's a very important resource to us. We appreciate everything that the city facilities team does to maintain that property for us and everything. We appreciate that very much. And we're in the throes of all of our summer seasonals coming in, and so the building is very busy right now and everything, so. So just wanted to give you that update and if you have any questions for myself or Brian?
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to tell you congratulations on retiring, and I think you'll like it. You know, I've been retired about 11 years now. I worked for the city about 40.
Oh, okay.
And I'm enjoying it, even though I'm in politics too, but I'm enjoying it. So you will too.
I'm a little nervous about it, but I hope to settle into it, and I am planning on staying in the community here, so I am definitely hoping to get out on the lake more for personal times and work time and stuff.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good luck to you, Brian.
Thank you. Good luck to you, Brian. And Bob, thank you for what you've done in staying in the community. And I don't think the council ever took a stand on it, or if you did, I wasn't around, but the frozen lakes plan, having that go away, I think, is a good thing for the community. So thank you for all your work and efforts.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next on this evening's agenda is considering the use of Smokey Bear Park by the Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation for a Color 5K Family Fun Run. I'd like to invite up Mickey Olson from the Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation. Good evening.
Hey. I'm Director of the Rainy Lake Medical Center Foundation and Marketing Department, and we're just requesting formally that you would approve us continuing our 5K fundraiser, and it'll be Labor Day, September 1st, start at 2:00 PM, and we'll start registration around probably noon or 1:00. So where we set everything up is the usual place, right behind the museum on the sidewalk there.
Wonderful.
The finish line will be there, same route. I submitted all of that, too, for a review.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Councillor Kayler and Wagner have motions to approve using the space. Is there any discussion?
Are there any road closures that are needed to be done?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I just, just so we get ahead of that if there is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, nothing. Sorry.
Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. The event is approved unanimously. Next, item three, approve a mayoral proclamation proclaiming June 2nd through 6th, 2025, as the week for distribution of Buddy Poppies. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So move.
By Councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 Aye. All vote yes. Proclamation is approved 5-0. Thank you. Item four, consider road closure for Elks Lodge, number 1599, annual corn and brat feed scheduled for Friday, August 15th, 2025. I'd like to hand this over to Councillor Kayler.
Okay. Yes, this is our annual brown cord feed that we have right out in front of the lodge there. It's one of our bigger community events we have, and that's how we raise money to go towards some of our scholarships. And this past year, we gave out about $10,000, $12,000 in scholarships to different students, and that helps out a lot. And we request that it's blocked off from 9:00 AM till 9:00 PM from Second Avenue to Third Avenue.
And how many members, I've got to ask, is the Elks Club up to now?
It's, I think, the last I heard of it was like the second largest in Minnesota.
They have 700.
And growing.
And growing, yeah.
So anyone want to be a member, come talk to me, we can fix you up.
Then I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councillor Holden. Second by Councillor Buller. Any more discussion on the road closure? Call the question.
I will, just, and I will say that I will be in touch with Mr. Brokaw, Public Works and stuff, to take care of the road closures, what they got with the state. That being said, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes. Corn and brat feed on the schedule approved 5-0. Thank you. Moving on, number five, approve internal promotion to the water technician, one position. If Sherry is here, is this something that she would normally present, or I just want to make sure we follow normal procedure? I've seen it done both ways, so please.
Mayor, thank you. She is not available. She is out of town at a training today. This is the internal movement when the other position for the street lead person was appointed. So this is an internal move within the organization.
Thank you. Motion to approve by the council.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kayler.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Buller. Discussion on any other discussion on filling a position. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Approved unanimously, number five. Thank you. Moving on, new business, number six, consider the first reading of an ordinance to update Section 10-32 rules, regulations, and traffic governing public parks. I'd like to foster some discussion on this to begin with because I believe this came from Public Safety Committee, just on what it is, because it is our first reading and it is an ordinance. So Councillors Holden and Wagner sit on that committee, so the floor is up for grabs.
I think it's real important that we had a time set for Smokey Bear Park so that it wasn't open, you know, into late hours and stuff, and maybe cut down on any problems in the park. So we looked at that, and the public safety is a real important thing. And so that was my main thing, was to make sure that that place safe later and later hours. Other towns have parks like this one, and they, you know, pretty much after 10 o'clock, it's done. So it kind of keeps things in order. Now, there are times when maybe a permit has to be handed out to keep it, you know, open a little bit longer, like the bass tournament or something. But overall, we were thinking on safety is what we were thinking for the public, so.
Yeah, and it's all parks, not just...
Yeah, it's not just Smokey Bear either.
It's all parks to alleviate overnight sleeping in the parks.
And the big checkpoint is daily from 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion's open again. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. First reading is approved unanimously. Thank you. We will move on in new business to item number seven, which is a Public Works recommendation to approve engineer design agreement with Bolton and Mink for the Riverview Boulevard East 2026 project, to include all kinds of improvements, to include sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and streetlights. I'd like to invite Jason Fisher, our city engineer, forward. And Mr. Brokaw, if you'd like to join as well, you're more than welcome.
I just, I can't do it right now, okay? Just be good.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, this was an item that was identified, a project that was identified in the capital improvement plan that we recently adopted, and it's for 2026. We'd be looking to reconstruct the street, sanitary and storm sewer and lighting for the east side of Riverview Boulevard. The other thing we'd be looking to incorporate in this project is the storm sewer outfalls and the ravine to stabilize it. There is opportunity for clean water funds for that portion of the project that we'd like to apply for. It would be part of the one watershed, one plan that we've been working on for a year now, for a year now, so.
Three.
Yeah. So with that, if any questions, or if Ted has anything to add?
Nope, that pretty much covers it. Motions to approve.
Just said, and the one watershed, I think our plan and our funding has been approved or close to it.
For 2025, 2026, yeah.
Yeah. Not this per se, but the overall.
Yeah, right.
Just for the information, what section, you said the east section, what, where does it start, where's it end?
Well, that'll be in design. We'll determine it. It's about half away, though. It's about the half.
Half, east half, basically. Okay, okay.
I was, yeah, good question, Councillor Buller. We talked about that in committee. I think it was brought up because of the condition of the surface there and the utilities. Why couldn't we do the whole thing in one year? And I think some of that was based around the 1% sales tax fund and what would be available. I'm sure that the council has shared in the emails coming from citizens about, this will be a welcome improvement. With that, is there a motion to approve this under item A from Public Works Committee?
So move.
Motion by Councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Number seven, item A, is approved unanimously 5-0. I've been reading through these and trying to decide B, C, and D, if we do them at once or individually, and have come to the conclusion they should be done individually. So item B is to approve a resolution approving parking restrictions on Ninth Street from Highway 53 to 14th Avenue. Is this something you'd like to touch on, Jason?
No, just here if you have questions. It's part of the project that state aid requires us to limit parking to one side of the road, so it'll follow the calendar parking. Currently, it's a one-way. We're going to make it a little wider, but not widen up the parking both sides, so.
Right. So that's a requirement of the municipal state aid road and the money attached to it.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Number seven, item B, this resolution is approved unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to item C to approve another resolution revoking municipal state aid streets in the City of International Falls, part of 15th Street, CASA 332 to... CASA, is that a typo?
It is.
Okay. Because it should be another number after.
Third Avenue East.
Third Avenue East.
Where the burner road for us older people.
I'm going to put that right in my notes. Is there, do you want to give a little bit on this? Questions from the council? Motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillors Kayler and Buller. Discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Number seven, C, is approved unanimously. Thank you. Move to item D, number seven, approve another resolution establishing municipal state aid streets in the City of International Falls, part of Ninth Street, Highway 53 to 14th Avenue. Motion to approve.
I'll make that.
This resolution by Councillor Holden. Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion or questions on this resolution? Seeing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Number seven, D, is approved unanimously 5-0. Thank you. Moving on, new business, number eight, committee recommendations from Budget and Finance. Approve setting special city council meeting for Monday, June 23, 2025. We'll have a formal presentation and approval of the 2024 audited financials presented by Ryan Schmidt of Schlenner, Wenner, and Co. Motion to approve setting this meeting date to discuss our city audit.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Holden.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Buller. Your discussion on the audit? Question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Meeting is set for June 23rd and approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll move to nine, committee of the whole recommendations. Item A, approve 2025 restaurant license for the Big Rainy Cafe, which I believe was formerly known as Sandy's Place.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Holden to approve the license.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion on the license. Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. License is approved unanimously. Number nine, A, thank you. Moving on, number nine, B, approve contract with their construction manager at risk with Rice Lake Construction for guaranteed maximum price for water treatment plant renovation project in the amount of $11,844,680. Mr. Holden, would you like to come forward, and anybody else associated with the project who feels the need to explain?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The memorandum that's in the pack, it was also discussed at the committee of the whole, and want to give a little bit of background on the project. So actually, the inception of this project started in 2021 when the city went out for proposals, looking at a needs assessment for the water treatment facility. for the water treatment facility. And that was when we got involved with the project. That needs assessment was completed in 2022 and identified various components throughout the treatment facility that were gonna need replacement or upgrades, primarily due to age of the facility. When we looked at the needs of that facility, there was, at the time of the report, there was a couple options looked at. Could the city look at addressing these needs in kind of a phased fashion of, of the needs? Or would it be more economical to try to address them all in a larger project? And at the time, as we looked at it, and the consensus was that the most economical way to take care of these improvements was to develop a large project that would minimize the costs, even though the project scale would be larger at one time rather than multiple projects. So that was kind of the first step in getting us to where we are today. The design of the improvements was initiated in 2023 by the city council. And then in fall of 2024 is when the construction manager at risk was hired for the pre-construction services. So just a little bit of history on the project and where we are now. Just a brief overview of the major portions of the project. So initially, it was rehabilitation of the filters or replacement. There's some treatment techniques and piping that need to be added to meet current health regulations from the Department of Health for surface water treatment facilities. There's numerous plumbing and mechanical upgrades, replacement of the chemical feed systems, replacement of all the equipment. There's, I think, 11 different pumps in that facility. There's blowers, there's valves, things like that, that are past their useful life. Upgrading the existing electrical and control system and then general building rehabilitation due to the age of the building, things like roofing, doors, caulking, painting, things like that. So those items are a summary of the major items that will be covered in the project. So what is up for the council's consideration is approval of the guaranteed maximum right, price from Rice Lake Construction in the amount of $11,844,680. If the council approves the guaranteed maximum price, the trade packages would then be out for bidding. And so there's already a pre-qualified list of subcontractors to perform the various tasks on the project, and the project would move into the bidding phase. The total project costs are outlined in table one on page two. There's the guaranteed maximum price. There is our construction engineering proposal, which is laid out at the, at the back of this memo. And then there was a USDA grant that was awarded to the city specifically for new backup power generation and also a couple valves to make it more resistant to flooding. And this grant was achieved because of, through the flood that occurred a couple years ago. And so the total construction costs for the project then are listed there in table one. $12,474,680. Again, the bidding will still occur on that. And so again, the guaranteed maximum price, that's the maximum that the city would pay. And the breakdown for that GMP is included at the, the end of the memo here. So I guess I'll pause there for any questions or comments or discussions on the project itself, GMP, the engineering, any of the above.
What's the total time period projected at for the finished product?
Expecting about two years. The, a lot of the major equipment lead times could be around a year before equipment comes in. And, and this project is mostly equipment replacements, whether it's filters, blowers, electrical equipment. So a, a lot of the work is going to be taking place after those deliveries. And so I'd say about two years to completion.
Any more discussion from the council for Mr. Golden? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we may have more questions too.
Yeah.
My questions for this. We have, we're awaiting the results of what hopefully is assistance potentially coming from the legislature for the project. We may get it, we may not. At least as of a few days ago, there was some talk that the water money in bonding may be given to PFA. And of course, that's not gonna help us because we're probably not high enough on their list. But if that occurs, there's a good chance that a bonding bill could fail because local legislators won't get projects that they got to handpick in their own districts. So they're playing their card game and hopefully we get a card. We, we've talked about the water plant. There's been an open house. The plans are done. So all this has come this far. My question is, is that if we don't get assistance and we approve this tonight, if the assistance doesn't arrive, is what I'm assuming is that we're going to take a low-interest, I believe, rural development loan for basically just shy of $12 million.
Yeah, so the loan would be Public Facilities Authority loan. It would be a PFA loan, and it would be low interest. We don't know the exact interest rate until the loan closes, but they've been between 1% and 3%. And it'd be likely a 20-year term. And I can speak a little bit to the, the comment you made, Mr. Mayor, about if PFA gets the money, how that would affect your ability to get grants. So the PFA has a grant system based on affordability. So it's based on the median household income of a community, and they base the grant affordability limit at 1.2% of the median household income. So when a community exceeds the cost of water, delivering water, so that would be operations, maintenance costs, debt service costs, interest costs. When your costs cost the average user more than 1.2% of the median household income, you get affordability-based grants. Because right now, the city does not have a lot of debt on the water system, or I guess at this point, maybe, maybe none. I don't know if anybody's, and he's been taken yet. And the cost to operate the system, this project would not push you over the affordability threshold of 1.2% for the median household income. And that's why through PFA, then, the grants would not be eligible yet. As you continue to do water projects and take on water debt, you could eventually go over that threshold, which would open up these affordability-based grants. But the cost of this project would not push you over that, that limit. It's been a while since I've looked at it. I think the projection was maybe, I'm, I'm guessing it's been a while since I've looked at, 15 to 20 million in water debt before you would hit that affordability threshold. So this project, I know, is quite a bit below yet where you would need to be to, to achieve those grants, so.
And we have discussed that in Public Works Committee with other water projects, if we were to borrow the full amount for the plant, where that ceiling or threshold is?
Right.
More discussion from the council?
Council Wagner.
Please.
Would it behoove us to wait till the January, June 2nd meeting? At least we'd know maybe by then what happens in the, with the legislature and stuff, or is this something we need to do now?
I, I just, I think probably many of us are likely in the, the same boat that the project is, the engineering's done for the project. Rice Lake is here and for the second time, thank you, and you are as well. And so, I mean, the project's cocked and primed, but yeah, by, if we wait, I mean, I don't know that we need another presentation necessarily if we postpone. Go ahead, Councilor Buller.
So if the bond doesn't go, we're still gonna have, go ahead and do this anyway. Yes. And if a bond does go, then it's just gonna supplement what we're working on, correct? Yep. So either way, either way, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, that may be. I was kind of of the opinion that we were gonna ask the state for money, so they thought that we needed it bad enough that they would give it to us.
Yes.
Council Wagner, I would, if, if there's a motion to postpone it, I would willingly want it back on the agenda to move it forward.
Yeah, I would.
Maybe table till June 2nd meeting.
It's only a couple, they say they don't need to come back. We know everything we do, but I'm for, I guess, I can wait till June 2nd, see if we get bonding, but I'm also inclined to move ahead either way. Just so everybody knows. But if we don't move ahead, I said maybe they will. I, I know what you're saying about if we move to go ahead with it before we get the bonding, that they might look at it, that we don't need it. You wouldn't think good, because either way, it's a lot, you know?
If, if we do go with a motion, if there is a motion offered to postpone until June 2nd pursuant to whether we receive aid, the only other thing I would ask is that at that meeting, assuming that it's on the agenda and we're going to take a vote on the project in totality, I think it would be prudent of us to have some type of explanation for that borrowing where we would have our water rates. Because I've, I think for us to take on that borrowing, I would like to be able to look the citizens in the eye and tell them what we think their water bill may be. It's going up. We know that. But right now, I don't think that we can answer that question. I've heard some different ideas floated around about the debt service. So that's my questions.
Does a postponement hurt anything that you have going?
I, not necessarily. I think a couple things to consider. A, a postponement of a couple weeks, I don't think. It would obviously, we will not be able to bid it until that, so it would just slow down that process a couple weeks. If, if it was delayed longer than that, I think the thing to consider would be the changes to the GMP that has been offered by Rice Lake. As market changes and things like that, that price could, could change. I don't want to speak for them, but I think talking a two-week time period, I wouldn't think the GMP would change, but as we extend it out farther, that would be the, the thing to consider. So.
And from Rice Lake, is there a sunset date on the GMP right now?
A couple of weeks. It's, it's fair. Other consideration is just getting some of those pieces of equipment released. And for a year on those lead times, we were hopeful to get a new filter in place in summer of 2026. And so I think that relieves a lot of pressure and risk off the existing facility. So, a couple of weeks to answer your question, Mr. Mayor. Okay, understand.
Council is comfortable with that?
Yep.
Thank you. Unless there's a discussion, would entertain a motion or more discussion or questions?
I'll make the motion.
To?
June, next meeting.
Okay. So Councilor Holden offers a motion to postpone this agenda item and move it to the June 2nd regular city council agenda. Is that correct, Councilor? Thank you. Is there a second to Councilor Holden's motion?
Second.
There is by Councilor Wagner. Discussion is open on the floor on this postponement. Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Postponement is approved by zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, item C. Acknowledged receipt of sufficient petition and authorized special city election. According to Minnesota statute 475.521, I would hand it over to Administrator Bergstrom and Attorney Nelson to describe what we have before us.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is a, a short memo in regards to, the petition was received for the reverse referendum process in regards to the renovation of the utility garages at the Public Works Building and in the amount of $2.755 million for the capital improvements that are at that facility. The petitions were received and deemed sufficient. And with that going forward, the city council can either do one of two things. We can submit the question to the voters at a special election in accordance with applicable laws, or the municipality shall not propose the issuance of bonds for the same purpose and in the same amount for a period of 365 days from the date of receipt of petition. So with that, there are only certain dates that we can hold a special election. The next special election date available is August 12th. However, we would need to notify the Koochin County within 84 days of that date, which is tomorrow. So we would, you know, if we do make a motion today, we can definitely begin that. Otherwise, the next available date would be November 4th. There is no state or county election, so again, that's a special city election. All upon the city's responsibility to handle that. Have been working with Joan at Kooch County and Stella at Secretary State's office in understanding the process and working through that process and what is necessary and how we will need to proceed with whichever process you choose.
Thank you. Question for you, Chelsea, is if the council takes the appropriate steps to have a referendum, which is what was discussed at Committee of the Whole?
A vote.
A vote.
Yep.
Does that implicate the project in future years?
So you mean if it goes to vote and is shot down?
Yes.
Yes. So that's a different section. Let me see if I can go to it. I have to hook back up my hotspot two seconds. So that one's controlled by? 475.58 subdivision 1A. If the electors do not approve the issuing of obligations at an election required, the question of authorizing the obligations for the same purpose and in the same amount may not be submitted to the electors within a period of 180 days from the date the election was held. And then if it's not approved a second time, it may not be submitted to the electors again for another year after the second election.
Okay. So it's 180 days on the first referendum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Floor is open for the council to discuss. Councilor Buller, I believe you'd mentioned that the petition we did receive was to request a vote from what we had discussed on Committee of the Whole. Is there other thoughts, feelings, concerns from other councilors or yourself?
I'd like just to see do it. Do it okay today, send it in tomorrow, get the election going. Go for the 12th of August.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do that, that we approve it today and send it on to the county tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilor Buller. Is the motion understood that he's offered to the council? Okay, is there support? Okay, is there support for Counselor Buller's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kayler. Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes. We have approved reaching out to the county and getting an election scheduled on that bond issuance. What is the date of the special election if we notify them tomorrow again?
August 12th.
August 12th. Understood. Moving on, under new business, nine, letter D, approve council membership on a committee to discuss the future of the burned ban shell structure along with Bolton and Mink, a council action. This is something that Counselor Wagner rightfully had requested was a committee to move on the ban shell is what I'm curious about is, I've asked a few times about Bolton and Mink's involvement with the ban shell, and I'm, I want to make sure we're on the same page that Jim Lukicik from Bemidji had offered his architectural services to the council free of charge, and I believe that there was interest in that. I've seen that we've paid Bolton and Mink a considerable, what appears to be a considerable sum on the ban shell. I'm not saying that that's the wrong thing. I just want to make sure that in this, we understand what we're getting, what we're paying for, and what hopefully the outcome can be.
Well, I'd like to see us move on with it and get going. I believe we got the go-ahead from what I understand. And I believe that Jim Lukicik will be good in many ways to be in the design of it and be helping. I mean, he, he wants to give back to his community, and I think that's great. I really do. Visit with him quite a bit, and I know they want to help any way they can to make that go through good and everything at no cost, so that means getting donations to help with what we are receiving from the insurance, whatever it takes, but we need to get, my feeling is we need to get what's there out of there and as fast as we can get it out of there. Because I, I tell you what, I believe in telling the mayor that out of all the things that I have discussion on in this great city, people are pointing at that just about daily. It's right at the top of the list, and I'd like to see it out of there so it's clean and get going on it. Because I mean, that's just, we need to do it, so I think there's a lot of people that want it finished.
Absolutely. It's important to our community. Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that, and I think if we formally approve the committee that we did at the committee of the whole today, that, then we're going to meet Monday, or Wednesday morning, get a start, start talking about how we're going to face it and go from there to figure out the Bolton, the Jim Lukicik. You know, the offer, the one thing is that, and that's a nice offer, and I'm sure we'll be able to work something out to get his assistance, but that, this has been going on for years, so obviously, that's why we had Bolton, Bolton and me coming in to help us with this process, to look at it and work with the insurance and things like that. But those are things we'll talk about at the committee and what we should do.
Right. And the reason I ask is to...
No, understand.
So I don't...
So I'll make the motion if you're looking for...
You can offer, go ahead, please.
To make the, if the committee's still, if everybody on the council's good with it being me and Counselor Wagner, then we'll work with Public Works Director and City Administrator and talk about how we're going to go about it.
I'll give you a second on it. Second motion. And I think they'll do a good job, these two guys. Tim, Tim's been kind of leading the way on this one, and I respect that. I think he'll, he'll do good pushing her through.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have motions by Counselors Kayler and Holden. We're clear on what the motion is to add to a committee, Counselor Wagner and Counselor Kayler.
And also to add Jim Lukicik to the mix, helping.
Do you accept that?
We will contact them and see whose level and interest. Yep.
Okay.
The committee will do it.
Yep.
Understood. Okay, so there's no amendment to the motion?
Right.
Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Committee is approved 5-0. Thank you. Ten, under new business is not any other business. It is tear down and removal of a mobile home at 2210 Third Avenue West, which was an addition that Attorney Nelson had asked to be added to this agenda.
Yes.
Please.
Thank you so much. If you guys recall, at the committee of the whole, I updated you, this is a mobile home park. The property owner of the actual dirt was supposed to tear it down by the 15th. That hasn't been done. The city can give them more time, or you can motion to accept the low bid that we received before, and then we can reach out and see if they're willing to still honor that bid. If not, we'll have to look at our next steps. But those are kind of your two immediate options on what we can do with that trailer house.
So any motion would be to go back to the bidders as proposed and see if they would honor it?
Yes, so the motion would be to accept the low bid.
Okay.
Subject to that individual or company agreeing to still honor that price.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motions by Counselor Wagner and Counselor Buller to accept what we received as the low bid for tear down and removal of mobile home at 2210 Third Avenue West. Excuse me, I'm taking notes. Is there discussion? Counselor Wagner?
So what happened to, have we contacted, you know, and asked them why they didn't meet the deadline?
A few things are, are going on. The state has now also kind of become involved in that particular trailer park for other issues. So he hasn't given an exact reason, but his hands are full with more issues coming from the state is the short answer of it. And I can share more details, maybe not recorded online, just for privacy sake.
Thank you. Excuse me, am I note-taking? Did we take motions to approve this?
Yeah, just waiting for call.
Okay. By Buller and Wagner, okay, understood. Call the question?
Aye.
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 No, motion carries floor one. Thank you. Number 11, out of thin air, new business, any other business to come before the council? I have a question for Chelsea. I'm doing this publicly on purpose in regards to, we've had a citizen ask about our law enforcement vehicles and whether they're legal or not as the markings on them.
Yes.
And so my concern is, is if we're out of compliance, how soon do we need to get in compliance and what ramifications are there?
Sure. So based on the statute, kind of gave a brief overview from, it might be two meetings ago. They're assigned certain colors. These particular vehicles are black with gray lettering, and then they have to have certain sizes. Unmarked or specially marked vehicles have the emblem only on the right side. Sometimes they're smaller, they're not easily, as easily identifiable. So essentially, it is a gray area statute. And what I mean by that is the city takes the position that these vehicles are compliant because they have reflective lettering, it's larger than what's required, and it is on both sides. If, it's not something where the state or someone comes in and just says, we're not compliant, it essentially, based on case law, has to be brought by a citizen typically involved in a criminal case where that individual arrested or pulled over or whatever it may be, said the vehicle was not easily identifiable, and then it becomes a civil issue for the city. The ramifications of that is the criminal case that usually starts this matter is dismissed, and then the city has to pay to correct those vehicles, and I don't know the cost on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm far from an expert, but I'd imagine part of the gray areas at night, you can see them plain as day, the, the signage on the vehicles, it is a little harder during the day, but you can see it, but at night, they reflect and it's, you can see them clearly and plainly.
Yes, and that's kind of where the argument comes in. Yep, exactly.
And just to add, this has nothing to do with the PD. It's a question that I don't want the council to become liable for in some fashion that at least, you guys assume we can speak together on this. Okay. Thank you, Chelsea.
You're welcome.
Reports of board, boards, committees, and department heads are in our packet. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Oh, we have a sewer meeting, Kooch, North Kooch tomorrow, so I'll be more updated tomorrow on that. And Airport Commission, meeting coming later, so those two areas will, we got meetings coming, so, and I believe we gave reports before on the North Kooch and that, so about the board member thing and stuff, so.
And what was the, when does the new state law come into effect on North Kooch?
The reconfiguration of the board?
Yes.
It's, you might think it's just have to do it and it's done, it's not. I talked to Kelly today about it too, and she's got her attorney involved, and there is a deadline that we have to have the, the formation of that board set up, and then we have to send it back down to legislation again, and then they have to act on it to approve it as it is. So we've got a meeting tomorrow morning, and then we'll also have a meeting with the HR Personnel Committee on, on June the 4th to get some options on how we can configure it before we bring it back to the board again next month, and then it'll get sent in. So there's a lot of work to go do yet, but it's, it's moving forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to our, unless there's more, we can move on to audience open forum again. If you'd like to come forward, have anything to speak with the council, about limited to five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Whoa! My name is Rhonda Benedict, 909 Sixth Street. I have a question. At the ballfields over by the football field, I was just wondering why there's not very many bleachers for parents and grandparents to sit at. I was just there watching my grandson, and a lot of parents and grandparents are sitting on the ground. There used to be a lot of bleachers there, and the way that the city is spending money, I'm just wondering why there's not very many bleachers anymore. Second of all, when you just talked about closing Smokey Bear at 10:00 PM, does that include the basketball court there? Is that part of Smokey Bear? Because kids play basketball there till all hours of the night. I'm just wondering, does that include that?
Yes.
Kids spend a lot of time there.
That, so that's an ordinance that we had the first reading of, so there will be another reading to enact the ordinance, which presumably would be at the next city council meeting in two weeks. Your opinion is valued on, on the topic of the closure, whether the council...
There's not much to do in this town, and there's a lot of kids that play basketball there. They're not, to my knowledge, I mean, I drive by there all the time on my way home and stuff. They're playing basketball, that's all they're doing. They spend a lot of time playing basketball. It's the only basketball court that I know of. Just an opinion, right? Not much else to do. My, my other concern is, or question, I guess, the waterworks, that was a big ticket that they just threw out, and you're asking for money from the state, I understand that. With these big ticket items that come up, and obviously, the waterworks, what, did you say it was 40 years old, right?
Are you, the water plant?
Yeah.
Yes.
Plant that needs to be redone. So it's a lot of money. We know that it's been getting old for a long time, right? These repairs have been needed. So you have to take the whole loan out if you don't get the money for the, from the state. So how is it that not a dime has been saved, knowing that these projects were coming? How is it that our city has not put any money aside for these projects? How is it that we're on the hook for the full amount for all these big projects coming up? How is it that we don't have money set aside for these? Isn't that what we're supposed to do with our taxes?
Well, it's a concern. Several things could be, could answer the question that you asked. One, we didn't charge enough. Two, we spent the money. Could be a multitude of reasons, and I would point out that with the need for, for the plant now, if the council moves forward with the water plant and, let's call it a $12 million loan, which we may end up doing, that the water rates are either going to go up, or a debt service charge or some variation thereof is going to go on water bills to pay back that debt. That's going to be a higher cost to the end user of water, which we would expect. To put that into perspective as well, just to add to your question, that in 30 or 40 years, if we want to have a reserve fund for the plant, we're going to charge even more, which apparently, we didn't do when we got this plant. I think that the, this has survived many councils since the plant was, was built, and it was basically a gift from the Boise expansion and the tax increment financing that funded it. So I think that there is some disappointment that we don't have more money to put aside towards the plant.
Well, it's a huge disappointment, because if I want a car, I have to save for it. I don't ask somebody else to pay for it, you know what I mean? So the fact that all these projects are happening back to back to back to back, and everybody's taxes are going up and up and up and up all at once, that's what the huge problem is. That's what the upset of all the citizens is. So it's pretty concerning that not a dime was saved, and now we're all supposed to fork out just one after another, after another. So I'm just wondering, knowing that these projects are coming up, why not? Any money was saved.
I have a little history for you, Rhonda. Boise used to treat the water for International Falls, okay? For years, so city wasn't involved in that. We were actually paying them for the water for a long time. One day, they decided they were getting out of the water treatment business, and the city was basically forced to build a new complex because, and somehow, we did come up. we did come up, we did come up with...
Please continue.
No, you can sit. So I'll give you a little more history, okay? So they turned it over to us and we had to come up with the money for a brand new complex, okay? All of a sudden, just like that.
And what year was that?
About 89. 1989, I believe. Okay?
So we've had a lot of money to save.
We were forced to get into the water treatment plant business because they got out of that business. So there was a lot of money that the city, and they did a good job of getting that building built. Yes, the years have gone by and now we're faced with it, but to say which council or what over the years was responsible for not getting money put away, it's been a lot of years.
Yeah.
And so you can't blame it on one certain council or, because it just, a lot of years went by and there are a lot of councils. Every four years, council changes, a lot of changes over the years.
That's what their job is.
Well, I got that.
Sitting in the seats doesn't matter. It's...
I got that.
Their job.
But now, where we're at right now, to redo this, is council that wasn't back in those days, wasn't there. I was working, actually. I was doing electrical work. So now we're, now we're facing the music. This council's facing the music.
Counselor, I want to, I want to interject politely that I'm not aware that unless it was a small amount, that the city of International Falls taxpayers paid for that plant.
I'm not saying they did.
Okay, that's what you said, so I just want, this is all on the record.
Okay, maybe I didn't word it right. Somebody had to pay for it.
The 1989 paper mill expansion, the value of the project, to the best of my knowledge, paid off bonds in which we owned the plant. So the value of the paper mill expansion is what paid for the plant. And I think that that's where, I think that that's, Rhonda, you're not the only one asking this question, so that's why I just want to make sure that info is out there.
So from 89 to now is a lot of years to put money aside for maintenance or do maintenance on the way.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Does that help? I mean...
I don't make as much money as the town does, clearly, but I save for what I need, so...
Does that help?
Just a question.
Rhonda, does this help you a little bit though, just showing you?
Well, no, because what you just said, obviously was...
But what happens is, is maybe a council comes through now and is facing the music. That's what I want to see.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Mr. Calder, please.
Mr. Calder, 1901 Sixth Avenue East. Thanks for the history lesson. I didn't know that. I'd like to ask the council to possibly put a letter in the file for the police department or the city administrator regarding the ghost paint jobs on squad cars, that any new squads be painted a full police paint job. This is ridiculous. No other town that I know of does this and so, is that possible, that we could do that? Put a letter in the file that, enough of this.
Well, it's a matter, it's a matter of public record. Now, since you brought it to our attorney's attention, I asked this evening to get it back on the record of, is the city liable for anything or out of compliance? And I think that the answer was that maybe, maybe not. So with that being said, the council, how do you feel about this? The floor is open to discuss that or we will kick it to Public Safety Committee in which it can be discussed and brought back.
I'm going to move it to Public Safety.
Okay. So we have, and the next Public Safety meeting would not be before June 2nd, which is fine. It would be June 16th? Okay, Counselor Buller makes a motion to move your request to Public Safety Committee. The next Public Safety Committee, is there a second to Counselor Buller's motion?
I'll second.
Counselor Kayler, second set discussion on the topic. Mr. Calder, please.
As I said, I think it was at the last meeting, my intention wasn't in order to cost the city any more money by having these paint jobs all redone. No. It was to cycle through as, as new squad cars are added or, or whatever, that, that the new cars get the regular paint job. I, I don't want to put the city or make a fuss about something like that as we're in streets now. The second item I'd like to talk to, if I got just another minute.
You do.
I think Rhonda's suggestion about the bleachers was a good idea, but maybe, Pete, there's a civic organization in this community that could sponsor some bleachers just up here. I just thought I'd throw that in because it's some civic organizations here that do good work and I think that would be worth looking at.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Calder. That wasn't germane to the topic, but that's my fault, not yours, because we did have motions for our discussion, so I'd like to call a vote to move the police car paint issue to Public Safety Committee. We have motions by Counselor Buller and Kayler and now I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. That's approved 5-0. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? We have correspondence from the public library and I believe we will be receiving some more in the future. Reminders, our next special city council meeting. There's a, almost got me. Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 4:00 PM for labor negotiations, so that will end up in a closed session. So if there are attendees, we cannot say you cannot come, but we would probably have to ask you to leave once closed session begins. Second reminder, next regular city council meeting is Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Thank you to the council and everyone in attendance. This meeting's adjourned.